I'd like to call the order of planning and zoning and building committee. A roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Here.
Alderman Currielli?
Here.
Alderman Messina, not here. Alderman Sisomarski?
Here.
Alderman Ames?
Here.
Alderman Arty Woods?
There.
Here, we have a quorum. Next, I need to approve of the minutes of October 24th, 2024.
I'll make the motion.
Any corrections to the minutes? If there are none, or in favor?
Right.
Motion carries. Okay, next is a report recommendation for update from 2012 building codes to 2021 building codes. Unfortunately, Ms. Springer is ill and she won't be doing the presentation. I'll make a motion to pass it, and if we have any questions, we can always bring it up to her, email her, or...
They can motion table it till next meeting.
I'll second Tony's motion.
She can table it.
You can, but you need a second. Now, you've got a motion on Florida, though, you need to get a motion. You're saying to pass it.
I second to pass it.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, thank you. So, I mean, it... I'm gonna vote no, so it doesn't streamline through, because we should have the ability to have a conversation and talk about it. But in an effort to keep it moving forward, you know, there's nothing to debate tonight, you know, we'll talk about it again at council.
Okay.
To keep it off the consent agenda, so that we do have a conversation, I'll be voting no this evening.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we could always, you know, discuss this next week at council, or we could table it to the next committee meeting, whatever the council wants to do. Also, if we're going to just pass it where we discuss it next week, I would encourage everybody to, you know, email some questions in advance, so we can get started, because we wouldn't have had the benefit of having a committee meeting. So if you do have questions, you already know, we could email them and have them ready. But we'll certainly have a discussion next week, if that's the route the council wants to go. I can answer a few basic questions today, but I can't get into any technical details, unfortunately, so...
Alderman Sisomarski?
Yeah, amend your motion, go to the next committee. Tell it to the next committee, not council.
Well, we have to first vote on the first one, right? Yep.
Unless it's a superseding motion.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Alderman Arty Woods?
If we do table it, when would the next opportunity to talk about it at committee be?
Manager Murmas?
It would be the December 12th committee. I will tell you that the December 12th committee, that is the evening, Holiday Apartments are gonna be in here to talk about that project. And I believe we've got also the audit presentation will be that evening, along with the return of electric aggregation discussion, and a couple other items. So we'll be a busy opening that night, so it's up to you guys.
And then I guess, if I could, this might be a naive question, but if we're on 2012 and we're talking about upping to 2024, is there really urgency on this? Again, I might be missing something, but if we're...
Go ahead.
No, there's no urgency. We were, this has been on future agendas for quite some time. I know that Stacy had it on her docket, finally to get to this point.
Sure.
But, I mean, to your point, there's not a huge rush. It was just in the hopper now, where we had it ready.
Thank you.
Mayor?
So even if we pass it to next week, we could start asking questions next week, and if you don't finish next week, it could always go back to committee, anyways.
You guys can do whatever you want.
Right, okay. So whether this week, next week is a short meeting or a longer meeting, we'll ask the questions anyways. Just don't put on a consent agenda, regardless.
That's what I said.
Right. So let's have a roll call on that, and if it doesn't pass, then we can look at the other option. Go ahead.
This is for next week?
Yep.
Well, this is to pass it.
Pass, right.
We're voting to pass it, without having a conversation.
Alderman Art Woods?
No.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina, not here. Alderman Sisomarski?
No.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arty Woods?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes. So it's a...
Three, three.
Yep, so the mayor has to... It's a tie, right?
Man, police?
Yes, so we can talk about it next week, Catalano.
Okay.
For long, I mean, I know we've waited a long time, but we can start discussing next week.
Arty Woods?
So just to follow up with that, so if we do have questions, how does that work at council? Because doesn't a vote have to be taken, or if we have questions, we can push it off?
We can push it off.
One person can push it off?
Yeah, we'll just have a vote.
No, we would have to vote.
Yeah, just have a vote. If people have questions, believe me, I'm gonna vote.
So I'm just saying hypothetically, this is gonna be my first time talking about building codes, so say I wanted to really dissect some things, it doesn't matter what I think, it matters as a whole.
Right, right. And listen, we'll have a longer discussion next week. At least we get started this way, because the 12th might not, might be real busy, yeah.
The 12th will be busy, but...
Again, it could go quickly.
We could push it to another day.
So at least we get started.
Okay, so that motion carries. So next is the items to consider at future meetings. We have Holiday Apartments, PUD, planned unit development for December 12th. And we have Bremeyer Phase 3 PUD coming up January 9th. Any other items to consider at future meetings? If we have none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A little.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Public Works Committee meeting. Let the note taker note that the same elected officials and staff are present. First off, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 24th, 2024.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. A report and recommendation. Item one is approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Alliance Allied Inc. for the City Hall HVAC improvements project in an amount not to exceed $95,223. That is my motion. Director Ling?
Thank you, Chairman. City staff recently engaged engineering firm WCW, which specializes in mechanical systems, to perform an analysis of the city hall's HVAC system and makes a report and some recommendations. Those report recommendations were used to gather bids for some improvements. Two bids were received, and we're recommending to award the agreement to the lowest bidder. We are recommending to, at the time, to stay within budget, to not include the mini-split systems, which were one of the bid items, as they're seen as supplemental to the main system.
What was the cost on the mini-bid system?
It was $70,000 and some change. So it would have put us over our budget, which was $100,000.
And then there's room for that next year, then?
Correct, yeah, we would monitor the system with these improvements, and then determine if the mini-splits are needed, then we can budget them appropriately in following years.
Awesome. Anyone have any questions? Alderman Woods?
Thank you. So going through the steps, we had an engineering firm came out, looked at this, they determined the scope of work, right? And we put that out for bid, the two people bid on it, this guy was the lowest bidder, and we've kind of parsed that down, so that it meets what we budgeted in our strategic plan. My question is, how have they viewed the site and all the documents? How sure are we that they're gonna hit? And I say this because every time we turn around, there's a 60, 95, or $120,000 extra. So I just wanna make sure that the 95 doesn't magically go to 120. Seems fairly simple, I would think that they should have come out and viewed everything. Can you speak to that?
Yes, they did. The low bidder of the two bidders was the only one to come out and actually walk the site and view the mechanical systems.
Excellent, thank you.
Mayor, please.
Explain to me this mini-split. What is that?
Sure, it's a unit that would be installed in the ceiling grid, that would help to condition that space, for instance, in the hallway here, that is controlled by the furnace and the condensing unit that control the entire upstairs. But because that hallway has all the glass, it tends to get a lot warmer, so it's difficult for that system to cool that space. So the mini-split systems would be in the ceiling grid, in the hallway, and help cool that space, so as not to overload the main system.
Any follow-up?
So basically like a damper and a...
It's another cooling unit in the ceiling grid.
Oh, okay.
Miniature confined system itself.
Okay, okay, now I get it.
Anyone else, any questions? All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina, not here. Alderman Sisomarski?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Yes.
And that passes. Alderman Sisomarski?
Yeah, it's off-topic a little bit. So you can tell me, how many contracts do we have with HVAC companies?
At the moment, we have two separate HVAC contractors that perform routine quarterly inspections of our systems. One for City Hall and Police, and one for Public Works Facilities.
So two separate companies?
Correct. We'll plan on bidding that out next year to try to consolidate that contract and update it.
Thank you.
All right, item two, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Wooddale and HR Green for right-of-way coordination and acquisition services related to the Elizabeth Drive multi-use purpose, or I'm sorry, multi-use path project in an amount not to exceed $23,440. That is my motion.
Second.
Anything on this, Director Ling?
So to accommodate the path along Wooddale Road from Elizabeth Drive to where the sidewalk ends at Oak Brook Elementary School, we'll need a small sliver of right-of-way purchased from the condominium association there. This service is, HR Green is now doing the appraisal, and this is to negotiate the price that would be paid for that parcel, as well as some temporary easements for construction. These costs are covered by the ITEP funding, which was received, so 75% of this expense would be covered by federal funds.
How much land is it approximately?
It's a very small area, probably less than 1,000 square feet.
Mayor, please.
So just to verify, that's for the multi-use path on the north side of the street?
It's for the path where it goes along Wooddale Road, along the west side of Wooddale Road, between Elizabeth Drive and the school.
Right, but it's also, what about on Elizabeth Drive, all the way to Addison Road?
On Elizabeth Drive, most of it is either on city-owned property or within the existing right-of-way. It's kind of where it turns to go north, is where we need that sliver parcel.
Oh, yeah, so the path is on the north, and I know I sent Mr. Murmas a question on, because I remember asking, and this, if the street's gonna be closed the whole time there's construction, or are we gonna do a one-way? And I thought I was told, well, the bridge will still remain open, because the new bridge is off to the side, Elizabeth should be open, or possibly a one-way, either east or west. So we're not sure of that, right? I mean, that's what I was told when we started, but I asked Mr. Murmas, it came up at a homeowner's yesterday. Just wanna have a straight answer.
So for this project, for the path installation, Elizabeth Drive will be open. When the bridge is under construction in 2026, ultimately, it's up to the contractor, with our input, obviously. It had been mentioned that the remaining bridge, the existing bridge, could remain open while they were constructing the new bridge, but at some point, it's likely that there will have to be a detour outside.
Right, no, I understand, I just, I know these things work, and all of a sudden, it's closed for a year, because, you know, whatever reason. So I'm just, I wanna make sure we're on top of that.
The contractor would probably prefer a detour, it allows them to, you know, work quicker, without having to worry about traffic, but that remains to be seen, still.
Right, okay.
Any other questions on this one?
What's going on with those petroleum lines? Is that gonna be a big issue? Is that gonna slow down the project?
It is something we're coordinating with Magellan Pipeline. We have proposed possibly straddling the gas main with the piers of the bridge, but if, you know, ultimately, they have the right to have us relocated at our expense, which we're looking into the cost for that now.
Follow-up? Good. Anyone else on this one? Alderman Woods?
Thank you. So in memo, HR Green, blah, 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 an agreement between City of Wooddale and HR Green for right-of-way coordination and acquisition services. And I was trying to match that up to the contract... And in their contract, items not included plat of highways, appraisals and review appraisals, and property acquisition costs. So if we're, there almost seems to be some disconnect between those two lines, maybe I'm reading them too critically.
So the appraisals and the plat of highway development is under the Phase 2 engineering agreement? This is separate from that? This is basically solely for the negotiation of the purchase of those properties? And the cost for the properties themselves will be obviously separate.
Okay, so property costs, not acquisition, because I read acquisition cost as them.
Correct, yeah.
Not the property, because that typically would be a different line item.
Right.
And then one other quick thing on that same memo, I gotta scroll back up. I don't know if it's still in effect or why it's in effect, but staff is requesting committee authorization, authorize the mayor execute a BLR form ahead of formal council approval. What is that?
So the BLR form is that first form that's attached, separate from HR Green's proposal form. That has to go down to IDOT's office in Springfield for review to get signed off, so in order to stay on the big schedule, we'd like to get a jump on that if possible.
Those two pieces in the same memo?
Correct.
Working separate, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on this one? Roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Sisomarski?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Finally, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Wooddale and HR Green for the Illinois Route 19 at Central Avenue Parking Lot Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $42,859. That is my motion.
Second.
Any comments on this one?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. When we had been discussing the location for the new water tower construction at 310 East Irving Park Road, we had proposed that the remaining area and that parcel not used for the water tower could be used for public parking purposes. It's not a lot of room left over for any other development besides green space or parking. So that was the route that we thought council might wanna go, so this would be to design that parking lot.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, just a quick question. So I see the design, now I'm not sure if HR Green already did that, 40, basically $43,000 to tell me to put in six inches of gravel and four inches of asphalt and some curb? Is that what you're telling me? And we have two driveways, an in and an out, I don't know, I'm looking at it, why can't we just have one in the middle, parking north and facing north and south? And I think you get the same spots, but again, we really need an engineer to figure out...
Some of the costs, I mean, obviously, there's a lot that goes into design, more than just, you know, telling us we have to put in X amount of gravel and X amount of asphalt. It's the development of the construction docks, it's bidding assistance. Typically, you would anticipate 10% of the construction cost for design engineering, so assuming that construction will be somewhere around $400,000.
For that little parking lot?
Yeah, just resurfacing the metro lot, we added, you know, $60,000 to that agreement, so it's... Ten, when you have a smaller project, the prices tend to be a little bit inflated, maybe 10% to 12%, as opposed to 8% to 10%. That's just the nature of the work.
You follow it?
No, I just...
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I think for one, by statute, we have to use an engineering firm to do any municipal project, or a licensed professional disciplined in that, right? So it's not up to us, as much as I would be on the same side. I'll draw that at home, I'll send you the directions. But the, can we, can we push back a little bit? Do we need to make that decision? Maybe there's something else? I mean, if we're talking about spending $450,000, let's call it a half a million dollars, because that's the way government goes. To put a parking lot in the middle of nowhere, perceivably, because we haven't used that space for anything, and that might not be the best use for that space, so it seems to me that without any other conversations, unless those existed somewhere and I just wasn't privy to them, doesn't make sense to rush in to spend a half a million dollars.
Manager Murmas?
I believe the business adjacent to the east is going to have some of their parking taken away from the water tower project. So some of those parking spots that we're putting in this would be shared parking for any future developments on that side of the road, potentially. But also, the business that's already there is losing parking spots, and this would make them whole with added parking spots. And I'm not saying the whole lot, maybe there's other options, but I know that was a consideration, I believe.
Correct.
Correct. As well it should be, if we're taking something from what we're given, but we're not having that conversation right now. At least I didn't hear it until you made that statement, and I'm okay if we have to compensate somebody, because we took 10 spaces and we're giving back 10 spaces, that's a completely different conversation. And then we're, we're gonna then lease that, or have agreements that they can use that, what does that look like? Because now the conversation completely changed, from where we started this conversation.
Director Ling?
Yeah, there will be some land that is taken from those two properties from the east, and it's likely that the property to the south will have their parking area impacted, and that was one of the considerations when, you know, deciding to put, or proposing to put a parking lot in this location. The other one is, it's just, there's not a lot else you could use that land for.
Right, no, no, I'm not, yeah, we're not gonna build a building. That's not what I'm looking for, but, you know, blankly, when you just said we're gonna build a parking lot, that didn't make sense either. But if you're telling me now we have to give some of the property to the people to the east, or some to the west, I don't wanna own that, and I certainly, well, don't wanna pay a half a million dollars, but I guess if I'm taking somebody's property, I have to compensate them, you know? I just don't know if that's the right conversation.
Director Ling?
And that was a consideration, and another is that if the ultimate view or goal of that area to the east is recognized as being mixed-use commercial, that it would be additional public parking, spillover parking for that.
You follow it?
That was a thought process.
So do we have an understanding of what that looks like? I mean, broad brush strokes? What parts being carved out for this guy? What parts being carved out for that way? I mean, when it was originally explained, I'm just envisioning everything other than the tank's gonna be paved parking lot, right? A big rectangle. Now it seems like it's pieces.
City Manager Murmas?
Yeah, some of the details of potential future developments were brought up in executive session. As far as current parking spots, I'm not sure the exact number. I think Director Springer knew the exact number. It's not a lot, obviously, it's a small fraction of the lot. The lot was more so for potential future economic development in the area with the light.
Okay, so is there any way that we could put out some visual aid? Can be, you know, scribbled to what's happening over there, those pieces, just...
City Manager?
Yeah, I'll have Director Springer draw something up for...
That doesn't have to be elaborate.
Yeah, we can, we can draw something up.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, please.
I'm looking at the drawing, and I see where we're hooking up to the water main, so I'm guessing the water main's either in the existing road or in some parkway, and the building we're talking about losing parking spots is to the east, so we're not really infringing on that property as it is, so...
Director Ling?
I don't know, I'm looking at this, maybe I'm not looking...
Where you see the roadway, there's no existing right-of-way right now. That right-of-way has been vacated, and either sold to that, those properties at some point in the past. We have to purchase a certain amount of land, and then we wanna have some right-of-way on the side of that land for the road. And then there's the drip edge of the water tower, you can't have it hanging over, you know, somebody's parking area. There has to be a certain amount of clear zone from the water tower for snow to fall.
Got it, okay.
Alderman Sisomarski?
Yeah, I thought when we brought this up, this was all on city property, not, I mean, are they parking on city property, or are they parking on their property?
Director Ling?
So since we've last spoken about this, the city did purchase this parcel, so most of the development is on city-owned property, but we do, in order to build that southern leg of Central Avenue, we do have to purchase some land from those two properties.
Any follow-up? Any other questions on this one?
No, I just, no. I just, not for parking lot, no.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Sisomarski?
No.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, vehicle purchase on December 12th. Anyone have anything they'd like to add? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I wanna see if I can add a vehicle.
Sure.
For myself.
May I throw that into the...
From my mind?
Award two vehicle? Okay.
Four, four, two.
I'll make a motion to, motion to adjourn before...
I'll sign it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Finance and Administration Committee. If the minute taker can please note, the same members are present. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from September 26, 2024.
To move.
Are there any questions, comments, or corrections for the minutes? All in favor of approval?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. I have one report and recommendation, a text amendment to Chapter 18, Administrative Adjudication of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale. That is my motion.
Second.
Yes.
Do you want me to explain? There's a, looks like a significant change, to so you're aware. It does. And it was a lot cheaper than your parking lot, just to, for the record, but... I'm sure it was. The, so what this is, this is essentially, what we're looking to do is to change it to mirror what was previously not available to non-home rural communities, it was available to home rural communities. So it's an expedited process. We've got multiple codes that we're adjudicating under slightly different methods, under our current administrative adjudication. What this does is provides a uniform enforcement of that. It does a couple of things, so it takes those statutory causes of action we have, it consolidates them into the singular adjudication system. It also makes these administrative adjudication judgments or decisions, they become, automatically become a judgment. Up until this point, they were an award, the award had to be confirmed by the circuit court to make it a judgment. And just so nobody's thinking we're running to get, you know, collect, you know, slam all these property owners, by the time they get to administrative adjudication, they've been, they've been contacted by the building department, told that they have a violation, they're given a notice if they don't correct it, they don't even get in the system. If they don't correct that violation, or make efforts to correct it, they're given a notice of a violation, they have then a period of time to correct those notices of violation.
of a violation, they have then a period of time to correct those notices of violation. If they don't, then they're in administrative adjudication. So by the time they get there, these people are the ones that are simply not complying for 21 Oak. They're just not complying with our, with the process. So what this does, it's a little bit of an expedite, once it gets to that point, we're not changing what happens with the building department working with these property owners to get to that point. Once it gets to that point, we don't have to go to the extra step and cost and time delay to take it to Circuit Court. These administrative adjudication orders become immediately enforceable. They still have an appeal right, 35 days under Illinois administrative law, but we don't have to wait. What we had to do before is wait 35 days. If in that 35 days, they did not file an appeal, then we have the right to go to Circuit Court, file for a confirmation of the award that the administrative adjudication hearing officer came up with, and then we'd file that, they'd have 30 days then to file their answer or response before we could do anything. And so what this does is it allows us to get to the same point, but in a more expedited fashion, without compromising the rights that any property owner has to challenge that. And it also has, allows us to recoup the city expenses associated with that and the attorney fees. So that's, that will dissuade people who are, you know, just simply willing, say, we're not going to do anything, see what you guys do, and this gives them an incentive to get their property into compliance. And it also limits the service, the time, before you had 30 to 40 days, that we had a window where we could write tickets, this reduces it down to 15 days. So if you had somebody whose property's in violation, we're not waiting, so we didn't have to, we don't wait 30 to 40 days, we go to hearing, then we have to wait another 35 days, and then we go to Circuit Court, and we have to wait another 30 days. This compresses the time to get not only compliance, but also those who don't comply, we can then take it to an enforcement level. And it also provides for a nominal $50 court cost to defray the cost of the adjudication process. It doesn't defray the entirety, but it does contribute.
Thank you for that explanation, I appreciate it. Alderman Art Woods?
So going to the appeals piece, is that appeals through adjudication, or is the appeal go to Circuit Court right away?
Attorney.
The appeal goes to the Circuit Court under Illinois administrative law. They have the right to have a judge review it, and the judge reviews it, and the judge makes a determination if it was against the manifest way to the evidence. In other words, was no evidence presented by the city to support the fact that a violation existed on the day or date set forth in the notice of violation, there was no evidence presented, and the judge entered it. So they have that right, and they do it in Circuit Court. So that doesn't change, that's the same, that's state statute, that doesn't change. The nice thing about this is, this was not available to the city as a non-home rural community at the time we implemented the administrative adjudication, and now, it is now available statutorily. And I think that there's been a, there's been a success with this administrative adjudication. You've got, you're always going to have a couple property owners who simply aren't going to, aren't going to comply, but I think the vast majority of it, it's not designed to be a moneymaker, although we've gotten some pretty significant contributions from those who don't want to comply with our code. We had an $80,000 check given to us about a week ago from one of them, and over the course of the time, we've been getting payments on those.
Follow-up?
Yeah, so back to the appeal piece, so does that hold off the stay, the judgment, and the clock ticking on fees, and do they have to continue to pay, I'm assuming in loss, our attorney fees also?
Yeah, so what we, before, we were able to, from the time, we could not collect fees until it went to appeal. And once it got, once we filed our confirmation, if they're there, we would then be able to, you know, get fees. But under this system, if they want to appeal it, and they still are required to pay the city's attorney's fees and costs associated with defending the appeal. So they, that's a cost that, you know, they have to, you know, if they have one that's successful, then the judge can say, yeah, that you're, there's a provision for it, but you, the city, did not have enough evidence, so this all thing, I'm taking it back to square one, so then we wouldn't, the court simply wouldn't award it if there was no basis for our adjudication violation in the first place. But otherwise, if there is, and there's a finding, we get the, we get the city, the taxpayers are not at a disadvantage by trying to enforce and make somebody take care of their own property, so we would get the fees through that process also.
Follow-up?
Follow-up. So, and just so I understand who the players are and who that person's paying for, so in the adjudication court, we have some attorney acting as the judge slash adjudicator, right? And then do we have a person acting as the city attorney for the prosecution piece, and that's who, that's who's billing, or that's who he's paying, that's who's time he's paying, it's not paid for the court?
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, you can't pay for the judge, because that...
Okay, right, right. I just wanted to make sure.
No, you're right. But yeah, the prosecutor who does that, and we have two, we have Markort Belmani Firm that does some of those, those are the more routine ones, the ones that get into the, you know, the more difficult ones, then we come in and do that, but either way, either of us will get paid on those that start through the process, both of us actually, on the various ones that we handle, but the hearing officer's got a flat fee, and that is not impacted by whether they file an appeal or not. So we pay that regardless. The $50 helps defray his cost.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please? Or do we, can we do all in favor, since it's not money, or do we do roll call?
Well, you're just making a recommendation, but it is a code.
Ultimately, it'd be money.
Yeah, code.
Not today.
I would do a...
It's code.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Kurrielli?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Ardi Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, grocery tax on December 12th, audit December 12th, electric aggravation December 12th, CIP January 23rd, budget February 27th. Are there any other items, anyone? Alderman Art Woods?
I don't have an item, but I do have a question. So when we say grocery tax, are we talking about what we're losing, or are we talking about possibly adding our own grocery tax? What's that conversation?
We thought, because we're doing the audit that night, it would be a good night to bring up some other financial issues that are coming down the line here. It's, I'm envisioning it more as informational on what our current grocery tax revenues are, what the state environment is that's coming on us, and what options we could have down